Our equipment. So if we have some equipment that is needed, then we can make those purchases. If we have additional training that's needed, then we can facilitate that additional training. But mostly, this is to make sure that we all work together as a team, that we can work with other agencies, and that we can work with firefighters from all over the region.
The main goal is to get everybody on board. The hope is everyone walks away from this learning something. This team is made up of members from various stations throughout the city. They all have to come together and show that as the Los Angeles City Fire Department, it is truly one team, one mission.
Getting funds directly into the hands of those who need it most is a challenge. Big Leap is a guaranteed income pilot to give individuals $1,000 a month. 12 months later, the city officials who backed Big Leap are sharing the difference the program was able to make.
In 2021, a visionary idea took root. What if the city of Los Angeles provided $1,000 direct, no strings attached, payments to some of our most vulnerable Angelino's?
We're excited to share the results of our guaranteed basic income, our Big Leap Pilot Program. The findings proved what we already know. People who participated in the program have better mental health, better physical health. They were able to seek and secure dignified work. Many of them returned to school, started their own businesses. These extra resources allowed families to thrive.
My experience was wonderful. I take, at the time, my son was six. I was a single mother working full-time, pretty much trying to figure out how to navigate as a new mother, especially of a child with special needs. I had to dedicate at least 40 to 50 hours a week for my son's therapy. And I just, at the time, I just didn't know where anything was going to come from at that point. I think that we forget that people need help, and sometimes it's just for a small amount of time. That little bit to you meant a lot to me.
When we launched this program, we had over 50,000 people who applied. In the end, we did a randomized selection of 3,200 participants.
We just announced a plan to expand our guaranteed basic income program. We're going to be in motion this morning, Councilman Hugo Martinez and I, to ask the city administrators to find funds for a follow-up program. These programs have been very effective. They have lifted folks out of poverty, they've provided resources that would not normally be available, and it demonstrates that individuals know best how to use their, how to use funds.
To be able to see the city that I grew up in step up to help the people directly versus helping programs that are supposed to help the people, I thought that was amazing.
South LA has a new center which will help the community access city services on its doorstep. The Development Services Center will house three departments under the same roof: city planning, building and safety, and housing, making it easier to get things done across these areas.
On behalf of Councilmember Marquise Harris-Dawson, we would like to welcome you to the Constituent Services Center for the official South LA launch.
We've never had a presence here. We've never had an office city planning in South Los Angeles. So the importance of it is you no longer have to go to City Hall in order to get services.
So in issuing permits, sometimes that work touches multiple departments: city planning, building and safety, housing. And sometimes we need approval from all three. Having them together under one ceiling makes that collaboration and coordination much, much easier. And that is for the benefit of our customers and our community here.
Due to the remodeling, we moved out temporarily in 2019, and we're very happy to be back here again. We have a public counter here where people can come and get their questions answered about our rent stabilization ordinance, how to register your unit for that, how to find out if your owner has registered the unit. A lot of times, people aren't sure quite what their rights are, so they come and ask about that, either landlords or tenants. I always think about how my grandfather used to make me take him to people's offices because he didn't want to, he wanted to see people face to face.
So this is going to be more than just where you get a permit. This will be a place where we can have very complex, very important conversations about the community and how that we can uplift the neighborhoods and communities of South Los Angeles.
From hosting the Oscars to selling souvenirs, Hollywood needs constant upkeep to continue shining. Hugo Soto Martinez and the Hollywood Partnership are collaborating on Access to Hollywood to make sure the most iconic parts of Hollywood are ready for their close-up.
The Hollywood Partnership is a public-private organization that oversees 80 blocks of Hollywood. It's a property-based improvement district, and so we provide clean, safe hospitality services throughout the district, above and beyond what the city provides.
Access to Hollywood is going to be a 3.6-mile stretch with a lot of improvements. It's going to go from La Brea all the way to where Hollywood meets Sunset. We're going to have protected bike lanes, more pedestrian safety. We're going to widen the sidewalks so we can have a robust al fresco program here on the Hollywood Walk of Fame. But more than anything, it fits in our larger vision to make Hollywood the place that we know it can be.
Well, we're lockstep with Councilmember Soto Martinez. Thrilled to say that we have a very collaborative, strong working relationship. So the work that we do, which is beyond the Clean and Safe Program, is economic development, ensuring businesses get what they need in order to thrive here. Work with the residential community to make sure that we've got open space for people to play. A lively entertainment and restaurant scene are things that are just so important to this neighborhood, and we help make those, make sure that they thrive here.
So when we talk about the vision that we want to see for this district and for the city, we have to row in the same direction with as many people as possible. And so in this case, in Hollywood, we work with the bid, we work with the small business owners, we work with anybody that wants to see Hollywood thrive and make LA the world-class city that it deserves to be. So we welcome any partnerships, as long as it's to create a more equitable, more just, and more livable city.
We want you to go to HollywoodPartnership.com. There's information about our Clean and Safe Program. We have a 24/7 dispatch center, the number's right on the website, and they can call or text us for anything that's non-emergency. If someone's having an issue on the street, but it's not a 911 call, you can call us, and our safety folks will come out and talk to those folks and get them what they need.
When we work on so many things here in the district, I oftentimes think about, what is going to be left behind after my tenure leaves? And so a lot of the investment that we're making here is going to, is going to be enjoyed by many, many generations to come. And so it's always good to think about that, think about the future. Don't think about yourself when you're making these decisions as an elected official.
Next time you're at the Walk of Fame, look up from the stars on the ground so you can catch the murals of Hollywood icons all around you. A free business accelerator program in Reseda. A new entertainment council is working to keep film production in LA, and the city gets recertified as a community wildlife habitat. The story's up next on City Beat.
L.A. City Bureau of Street Services is partnering with the Economic and Workforce Development Department to bring a free business course to the Reseda area. The six-week course is designed to help aspiring entrepreneurs and small business owners start and grow a business. Managed Career Solutions, MCS, operates the Business Accelerator Program, which offers marketing, financial management, and expert guidance. All resources are provided free of charge, and participants have an opportunity to receive a $5,000 micro-business loan. The next Business Accelerator Program begins on August 15 at Councilmember Bob Blumenfield's Reseda District Office. To apply, visit tinyurl.com/MCS-BAP. Mayor Karen Bass has convened the inaugural Entertainment Industry Council with representatives from television channels, streamers, the Motion Picture Association, and International Alliance of Theatrical Stage Employees, IATSE. According to Film LA, the partner Film Office for the City, production in the second quarter of 2024 lags behind that of 2023 and is down 33% from five years ago. Construction of seven new studios and sound stages has been expedited under the mayor's Executive Directive Number Four, which removes barriers to business creation. The Entertainment Industry Council is looking to bolster business with solutions that will keep production in Los Angeles and benefit all the workers involved. For more information, visit mayor.lacity.gov press. The city of LA has officially been recertified as a community wildlife habitat and is the largest city to receive the certification of the National Wildlife Federation. The certification is the result of citywide community efforts assisted by L.A. City Sanitation and Environment. In order to become certified, green spaces need to provide four basic elements that all wildlife need: food, water, cover, and a place to raise young. Garden spaces must also use sustainable practices like conserving water and removing invasive plants. Communities can earn national wildlife certification for local properties by engaging members in education and outreach and in projects such as habitat restoration. For more information on the work of L.A. City Sanitation and Environment, visit lacitysan.org.
Line, house, bingo. Those are some of the words you'll hear at the Fairfax Senior Center. The center offers different activities to help seniors stay sharp and socially engaged. It's never too late to make friends, learn new games, and even practice downward dog.
You are at the Fairfax Senior Citizen Center. We service all of the seniors in this area, and we focus on the social, cultural, recreational, educational, different types of therapeutic needs that we have that the seniors need.
Forty-two, four-two.
Bingo!
I heard a bingo, ladies and gentlemen, I heard a bingo.
It's our usual bingo day, and I believe it's handled so wonderfully by Bill and Caroline, who call the numbers. And we're getting more and more people coming each week, and I really like the atmosphere. I look forward to it.
G, fifty, five-zero.
We enjoy the parties, we enjoy bingo, and everybody loves it. At halftime, me and Ellen, we give them some humor, we crack some jokes. The bottom line is, it's very nice, everybody has a good time, and that's what it's all about.
The exercise, I do strength building and yoga. And we also have Mahjong game on the first Friday of the month. We will be teaching Mahjong to people who'd like to learn. You meet new people, you make new friends, and it's really an excellent place to come.
The center is very important. It's a great place, the people are great here. I happen to live close by, so I'm here all the time, and I've made some great friends. And it's really, it's great for the community.
This is just a very good place to be either involved in or just come out and have a wonderful time. What else is there in life?
High, nineteen, one-nine.
If you're a senior or no one who would love to join in the fun, make sure to visit LAparks.org to find your nearest senior center. It's the classic career catch-22. You need experience to get a job, but you won't get a job without experience. Enter the Department of Public Works. With their internship program, they're providing young hopefuls with training and real work experience to kickstart their careers.
The city of Los Angeles in general and Public Works Department in particular provides training and education for students who are trying to prepare for professional careers. And the Department of Public Works is intricately involved in its five bureaus to make sure that students have the opportunity to inculcate themselves to the experiences they will get. The kinds of work they are doing is related to the professions that they are studying: engineering, for example, and then in terms of financial services, the same. One thing about financial services is that they are generally involved in every organization.
During the summer, I've been actually going to different departments and interviewing them, so asking them specific questions, whether it's about how the shortfall has impacted their department or what they are currently doing in order to work around this. So I applied because I know that when it comes to politics and also just working with the government, there's a lot to learn and a lot of transferable skills into real life. So I realized that not only would I be able to learn finance and deal with something in my field, but also at the same time, I'd be able to gain real-world experience.
After the George Floyd experience, we looked at the data and decided that there were areas, we had an underrepresentation of African-American engineers. We had in our accounting department an underrepresentation there as well. And so we decided to put together the HBCU Recruitment Committee. And this would have allowed us, even though we are not able to get the talent here within the state, people from this state are going to school in other places, and we wanted to be a vehicle by which they could return home and be a part of this great city when they get their knowledge and skills.
For anyone that has no idea what this internship is about and how I would explain it to them, I would say that it's maybe surveying, going around, asking people how the situation has impacted them. For this instance, examining the impact of the budget shortfall in public services. I'm going around to other departments, people that are dealing with these firsthand, and asking them how they are dealing with it, how it's affected them, and how they think that they will proceed in the future.
The thing that people in this country aspire more than anything is to be given an opportunity to have an equal chance. And when I think about diversity, I think it is the strength of who we are, but I think equally, inclusion. Can I be included in what we do? And so these three principles are the core values that bring us together for what I call the American dream.
We saw how the city is helping graduates get work experience, but what about the step prior: going to college? LA's Chinatown Branch Library held an event to help college hopefuls navigate some of the financial challenges they'll face in their new chapter.
Today, we're having our College 101 Workshop here at the Chinatown Branch Library. We're connecting teens in our community with financial literacy resources and college and preparing them for college applications. A lot of times, teenagers need a lot of handholding when it comes to understanding financial literacy and how to navigate the college application process. What are the issues that they may run into? And then what are the avenues that they can take when they decide which college they want to attend?
I am actually an immigrant. I came from Egypt two years ago, and it was really motivating to be here and to get to know about a lot of things, about college, and about how, how the bank works and how to take care of yourself financially, as well as emotionally, and try to like avoid scams when you're in college.
We want to make sure that we present this information to our youth and our teens so that way they know what to look out for and who to trust and who not to trust when they get caught up in a situation.
What I would really like them to take away from this session and from the program as a whole is how to take agency over their financial habits and financial decisions and how to confidently set financial boundaries with people in their lives.
The Chinese Floral Arts exhibit gathered nature and art lovers around breathtaking floral arrangements. Sharing this ancient art and highlighting its importance is helping to keep the cultural practice in bloom.
We are very excited. We have a floral delegation from Taipei. We are putting on an excellent traditional Chinese flower art exhibition. The culture of Chinese spans 5,000 years, and the traditional Chinese flower art is from the Song Dynasty, is a thousand years ago. All the flowers are created by our delegation floral master from Taipei, along with our local students.
We found that the Chinese floral arrangement is kind of like no more than two or three people doing it, so we feel like this is really important for us to have the mission to spread out the cultural in the United States, especially in American cultural as well. We want to spread, we want to share our thousand-year cultural in the United States as well.
Within it, that is the education component that is about self-efficacy, finding your life balance through the study of the fall art.
Sharing cultural experiences helps all of us for the future interact. It increases our diversity and the appreciation that we have for each other, and that makes us a better community long-term.
For the Chinese American Museum to be located here at El Pueblo is, is a win-win for all of us. We can do more cross-cultural events in addition to doing events about the Chinese in America and also about the Chinese overseas.
In this week's feature story, I sat down with Angel City Football Club's Catherine Davila to talk about how the club is impacting the local community with a range of social outreach programs. Let's hear this story. Angel City Football Club of the National Women's Soccer League is working really hard to break glass ceilings and really change the rules of the game. I'm here with the head of community and marketing, Catherine Davila. Thank you so much for being here, Catherine.
Of course, thank you, Natalia. It's a pleasure.
I know that you've worked with Playa LA and specifically Girls' Playa LA, the LAparks, to create the Soccer Leadership Academy. What's that about?
So that is one piece of our impact work, and I'll just give the sort of broad strokes of what our impact work is, which is by providing essentials and education. As we think about essentials, that's everything that somebody needs to sort of think beyond survival and think about dreams and think about thriving. So the way that shows up is really everything from food security work that we do with DoorDash to ensuring with Chevy that 100 people every match have tickets and transportation to our games for free. And then just to making sure that we have safe, reliable places for girls and gender-expansive youth to play the sport. And so what you're going to see from us is expansion and really deepening of relationships with the city of LA, Wreckin' Parks, with GPLA, you know, expanding beyond the Leadership Academy to ensure no and low-cost access for girls across this entire city. And obviously, one of the key things here and the power just of the existence of Angel City is this whole idea that if you can't see it, you can't be it. And so that is one of the reasons it's so important to bring these youth players here, to see the players on the field, to see a president who is a woman, to see, I think it's 70% of our staff is women. We're working on balance, but, you know, to, to see those things is really impactful.
No, and I love that you have a specific department at the street team, right? What's its purpose?
Street team is a huge, huge part of that. So Street Team, crazily enough, was formed during the pandemic. We said, we have to go out and actually meet people. People need to know we exist, because at that point, I was getting on the phone, and people thought I was coming from the brewery, the Angel City Brewery.
Oh, yes.
They didn't know there was a women's team here. They didn't know there was a women's league in this country.
Wow.
And so it was just like, we have to actually like
Educate people face to face.
Be grassroots, exactly. One of the most impressive things about Angel City as an organization is that the values and the goals have sort of remained core to who we are since the beginning. And fundamentally, that is to push for equity by using sport and entertainment. I worked in the youth soccer space and in the adult women's space, really trying to build a pathway so that women could have a relationship with the sport for their lives. So Angel City really has been sort of the pinnacle of that same work, to really form a connection with our city and say to people, this is a place where you find your people. This is a place where you can find meaning and joy and beyond what's happening on the pitch, which, you know, is always the center of what we do, working to change the world for the better.
In this week's Things to Do, celebrate 150 years of the Point Fermin Lighthouse, enjoy Some Strong Words at L.A. Public Library, and participate in a BioBlitz Science Challenge. All this up next on Things to Do.
Point Fermin Lighthouse is hosting an anniversary party, and everyone is invited to celebrate its 150 years. L.A. City's Wreckin' Parks Department and Point Fermin Lighthouse Society are hosting a community celebration of this landmark lighthouse. Enjoy vintage exhibitors and games, Victorian costumes, Model T cars, the San Pedro High School Band and Drill Team, family activities, and food for purchase. The first 150 children at the event will receive a special gift. Head to the historic Point Fermin Lighthouse for the grand 150th anniversary celebration on Saturday, August 17, from 10 a.m. to 3 p.m. For more information, see the Events tab at LAparks.org. L.A.'s Public Library invites you to sit back and enjoy a summer-themed show from the Strong Words crew on August 18. These live spoken-word shows are known as storytelling for grownups and have been a hit in Silver Lake and Atwater Village for the last 13 years. Strong Words brings its summer show to the Central Library's Mark Taper Auditorium, featuring voices of the city. The format is fun and refreshing stories, poetry, and on this occasion, special musical guest, Jason Luckett. Reservations are strongly recommended. Enjoy the summer vibes of Strong Words taking place on Sunday, August 18, at 2 p.m. For more information, visit lapl.org/events. Join L.A. City Wreckin' Parks in a BioBlitz Challenge, gathering as much data as possible on Saturday, August 17. Junior urban ecologist Ryan Kinzel will lead participants in learning more about the natural environment while helping in a scientific survey. The goal is to find and identify species of plants, animals, and fungi in the Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park using the iNaturalist phone app. Everyone is welcome to help in this survey of biodiversity. Come prepared with sunscreen, water, comfortable clothing, and a charged phone with the iNaturalist app software already downloaded. Head to the Ken Malloy Harbor Regional Park for the BioBlitz Challenge on Saturday, August 17, at 8 a.m. For more information, see the Events tab at LAparks.org. And that's a look at some things to do.
And that's all for this week. I'm Natalia Bilbao, and from all of us here at LA this week, thank you so much for joining us. Remember that you can watch us online anytime at lacityview.org, and we're also on Instagram, Facebook, X, and YouTube. See you next time for more LA this week.
Los Angeles, a world-class city and home to one of the most complex transportation systems anywhere. With its renowned freeways and its ever-expanding public transportation system, the choices for navigating this sprawling metropolis have never been greater. While the future of transportation in LA is still being written, its past shed some light on what challenges may lie ahead. It could be said that the history of LA transportation is a tale of two cities: one driven by commerce, innovation, and the public good; the other, filled with conspiracy theories, legal battles, missteps, and in 2020, a global pandemic. But in spite of roadblocks, Los Angeles has always had an uncanny ability to reverse course, get back on track, and move full speed ahead. In its earliest days, getting around El Pueblo de los Ancales was slow and arduous.
So good morning, everybody. Welcome to the meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Friday, August 9. Public comment is going to be in person in the council chambers and via teleconference. Madam Clerk, let's officially start this meeting and call the roll.
Yes, sir. Bloomingville, De Leon, Harris Dawson, Hernandez, Huck, Krikorian, Lee, McCosker, Padilla, Park, Price, Ramon, Rodriguez, Soto Martinez, Jaroslawski, 12 members present in the court, Mr. President.
Wonderful. First order of business?
Approval of the minutes of August 7, 2024.
Great. Councilmember Park moves. Councilmember Lee seconds. Next?
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Councilmember Hernandez moves. Councilmember Ramon seconds. Next? Let's run through the agenda.
Yes, sir. Items 1 through 8 are items for which public hearings have been held. The committee reports for items 4 through 8 have been submitted and are available online under their respective council files. Items 9 through 12 are items which public hearings have not been held. Item 13 on the continuation agenda is an item for which public hearing has not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay. Before we get to specials, as I understand, we have a, we need to do a reconsideration for an item that was a budget committee item from last week. There's a city attorney has a technical change on that. So can we reconsider Council File 23-0773? And then we'll introduce the substitute motion, which is basically just a slightly less dollar value being authorized. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Is there a second on this motion to reconsider?
Mr. McCosker, seconds.
Mr. McCosker, thank you.
So we need to take that vote now? Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Let's open the roll on reconsideration. Close the roll. Tally the votes.
12 eyes.
Great. And we'll actually vote on it after public comment, but we do need to read into the record the new version, which, as I mentioned, is basically the same thing, but a slightly lower dollar value on the amount that the city is authorizing per the city attorney. Go ahead.
So the motion reads, "I hereby move that the council adopt the following recommendations in order to effect the settlement in the case entitled Edward Clay v. City of Los Angeles et al. consolidated and Charlotte Lawrence v. City of Los Angeles et al. lead. Los Angeles Superior Court Case Numbers 21STCV06277 consolidated and 21STCV04242 lead. This matter arises from a traffic accident that occurred on March 31, 2020, at the intersection of Crenshaw Boulevard and Hyde Park Avenue in Los Angeles, California, subject to the approval of the mayor. One, authorize the city attorney's office to expend up to $120,000 in fiscal year 2024 to 2025 in settlement for the above entitled matter. Two, authorize the controller to transfer $120,000 in fiscal year 2024 to 2025 from the liability claims fund number 100/59, account number 009798 miscellaneous liability payouts to fund number 100/59, account number 009792 police liability payouts. Three, authorize the city attorney to draw a demand from fund number 100/59, account number 009792 police liability payouts as follows. A, Wilshire Law Firm, PLC, and Charlotte Lawrence in the amount of $120,000. And four, authorize the city attorney or designee to make necessary technical adjustments subject to the approval of the city administrative officer and authorize the controller to implement the instructions. This matter was recommended for approval by the Budget, Finance, and Innovation Committee at its meetings held- at its meetings held on June 12th, 2024 in closed session as permitted by Government Code Section 54956.9D1." And it is, I believe, being seconded by Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson.
Okay. Okay. Next, colleagues, any members wish to call any items on today's agenda special? Ms. Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. For item two, I would like to move that we adopt the Government Operations Committee report, and I would like to make a technical amendment to item 11. Please change the date from August 29th, 2024 to August 30th, 2024. For the illumination, please.
Great. Thank you. On item two that you mentioned, oh, do we have a second on that? Second.
Thank you.
Okay. On item two, there is also, I have a very minor amendment on that for a report pack. City Attorney could read that into the record.
Yes. The amendment reads that I move to amend item number two to read as follows. Two, direct the CAO and Department of General Services to report, I'm sorry. I move to amend item number two of the Government Operations Committee report relative to unarmed crisis responses in other cities to add private properties to recommendation number two and to add instructions three and four, which read as follows. Instruction number three, direct the city administrative officer with the assistance of the chief legislative analyst to report back on opportunities to potentially leverage health and mental health funding from Medicaid, Medi-Cal, the County of Los Angeles, and the California Department of Healthcare Services to support crisis response programs in the city of Los Angeles. Instruction number four, direct the city administrative officer with the assistance of the chief legislative analyst to report back on ongoing partnerships and opportunities with the County of Los Angeles to support crisis continuum of care pilots and programs in the city of Los Angeles. And is there a second to this motion?
Mr. Hernandez, seconds?
Mr. President, for item 11, Councilmember Hernandez's technical amendment, there needs to be a second for that one.
I'll second it. Oh, Councilwoman Rodriguez, that's fine.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Next, speaking of Councilwoman Rodriguez, you're next on the queue.
Thank you. I'd like to call item one special for an amendment that's being circulated.
And the amendment, I believe, is a technical amendment, and it reads as follows. I move that item number one on today's council agenda be amended to adopt the following in lieu of recommendation number one contained in the report. One, designate the intersection at Van Nuys Boulevard and Kewan Avenue as follows. Nancy C. Avery Square, and I believe this is the new language, lifelong civil rights activist, end of the new language, first African-American postmaster of a major post office, 1961 through 1984. And is there a second to this motion?
I'll second. Okay. And then, Mr. DeLeón.
Yes, Mr. President. I have an amendment for item 13. I believe the city attorney has the amendment at the desk.
Yes. The amendment reads that I move that item number 13 on today's agenda be amended to add the following language. Instruct the LEDOT, upon identifying the appropriate safety measures, to install these improvements within 60 days of their identification. And all of the following language is in bold, so I presume it's new, using the Council District 14 AB 1290 funding available in the new appropriation account number to be determined, entitled LEDOT District Engineering Traffic Safety Improvements Within CD 14. And is there a second to this motion?
I'll second it. Okay. Colleagues, any other specials? Okay. Madam Clerk, what's next?
Mr. President, council may now vote on items where a public hearing has been held, and so that would be items three through eight, sir.
Okay. Let's take those items up, items three through eight. Seeing no speakers on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. And tally the vote. Twelve eyes that those matters are adopted. What's next?
Mr. President, item two, we're still waiting for the amendment to be passed out. So if council would like to go to presentations, it's...
Sure. We can do that, and then we will read those amendments in before public comment. Before we get to presentations, I want to do an announcement. It's actually on behalf of our council president, Mr. Krikorian, I want to recognize the second cohort of Council President Krikorian's 2024 San Fernando Valley Youth Leadership Academy. You guys are here. Stand it up. All right. This year, Councilmember Krikorian's office hosted two cohorts as its last term. These students are thoughtful, responsible, inquisitive about the functions and purpose of city government. They possess a desire to make their communities a better place. They learn the legislative process in our city, our city departments with community partners. They had an incredible amount of exposure. They visited Council District Two's Alexandria Park Tiny Home Village, the Athens Material Recycling Center, the North Hollywood LAPD Station, LAPD Station 60, the AT SAC with the Department of Transportation's Automatic Surveillance Control, NBC Studios, Van Nuys Airport, and more. They really had an incredible time. Their program ends. The culmination of that is seeing our council in action, which is what they are doing here. So we all thank you, and on behalf of Council President Krikorian, thank you so much, and I know he has certificates for all of you. So give them a big round of applause. And then, before we get to presentations, Mr. DeLeón, you had an announcement?
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Colleagues, I just want to recognize very quickly, before we start the presentations before us here today, a remarkable young man and his younger sister, both residents from the community of Boyle Heights. This is a remarkable man, young man who is incredibly resilient, incredibly courageous, has gone through his trials and tribulations, but is really a role model for many of us. Young man is a high school student, ninth grade, Roosevelt High School. His younger sister is a student at Soto Elementary School as well, too. We spent some time yesterday, we're going to be spending some time together and doing some very important projects together. But I also want to recognize Joshua Mora as well as Melanie. Please stand up, because they are incredible young men and women from the community of Boyle Heights, but also, too, I wanted to come down on Friday because we're celebrating their birthday as well as Boyle Heights residents. Feliz cumpleaños es el quince, you know, for Joshua, and 10 years old. So with that, feliz cumpleaños, we wish you the very best. Thank you much. Thank you much.
Thank you. Okay. Colleagues, today we have three very special presentations. We're going to start with Councilmember Lee, who's going to honor the National Liberation Day of Korea. So, Mr. Lee, the floor is yours.
Good morning, colleagues. I'm joined here by the great council member from the 10th District, Heather Hutt, whose district encompasses Koreatown, and every year we come together to celebrate this important day that's not only important in Korea, but also to Korean-Americans here in the city of Los Angeles. So it is both an honor and joy to commemorate the 79th anniversary of Korean Independence Day with all of you here at Los Angeles City Hall. This day holds deep significance as it marks the end of Japanese occupational rule in Korea and was the beginning of a new chapter in Korean history. And over the past 79 years, Korea has made remarkable strides on the global stage. The country's economic growth has been nothing short of extraordinary, transforming from a war-torn nation when my parents left the country into one of the world's leading economies. This transformation was made possible by the hard work and determination of the Korean people who have shown incredible resilience and innovation. And as a Korean American living in L.A., I am deeply grateful and immensely proud of the continued progress that Koreans have achieved up to this day. The Korean community in Los Angeles has played a vital role in promoting cultural exchange and understanding between our two great nations. The vibrant Korean culture that thrives in our city is a testament to the enduring spirit of the Korean people and their contribution to the global community. Today, as we celebrate Korean Independence Day, let us remember to honor the past, honor the present, and look forward to the future with hope and optimism. Let us continue to cherish and support the growth and vibrancy of the Korean community, both here in Los Angeles and around the world. Thank you for being a part of this celebration, and may we continue to work together to build a brighter, more inclusive future for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Lee. Good morning, everybody. Annyeonghaseo.
Your Korean's better than mine.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. It brings me so much joy to be here with you all as we celebrate Korean Independence Day. I really want to thank you, Councilmember Lee, for allowing me to collaborate with you on this day of celebration, as well as Ensel Han, Steve Kane, Juwai Kim, Carol Lee, for being here to celebrate this exciting day. Korean Independence Day is celebrated on August 15th every year, commemorating Korea's liberation from colonial rule, marking its end to World War II and the restoration of Korean sovereignty since the early 1900s. Koreans have been calling the city of Los Angeles home, particularly an area between Arlington and Vermont, from Olympic almost to First Street. As a councilwoman of the 10th District, I have the great honor of being able to represent Koreatown and shine a light on one of the most historic and famous neighborhoods with the best food in the city of Los Angeles. I'm just going to say that. I'm just putting that out there. In case you need to run and get your lunch, try Koreatown. Koreatown's not just a neighborhood, it's a standing testament to the dreams and contributions that Korean Americans have made in the city of Los Angeles. From the earliest immigrants who arrived here in search of a better life and new opportunities with nothing more than hope and determination to succeed, to the subsequent generations of Korean American business leaders, community organizers, and residents who continue to enrich and promote Koreans' culture through the city and especially in the 10th District. My office has the opportunity to work alongside some of the leaders in Koreatown community. We just recently hosted an event at the Koreatown Youth Center alongside Steve Kane, where we saw the opening ceremonies for the Olympics. And we opened a park at P.O. Pico Park for more green space in Koreatown. We know that working together will make a huge difference. So whether you're looking for a community, a beautiful scenery, or Seoul International Park to the Korean Pavilion right down from the community center, you'll find it right in the 10th District. This is an area that I'm proud to represent, and I'm proud to work with our community, and I'm so happy to be able to celebrate with you today. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutt, and everything that you do for the Koreatown community. It's my honor to bring up, to speak next, Unshil Han, the Counsel of Public Affairs for the Council General of the Republic of Korea here in Los Angeles.
Respected President and members of the Los Angeles City Council, esteemed leaders of the Korean American community, ladies and gentlemen, August 15th is a historic day that marks both the 79th anniversary of our liberation and 76th anniversary of the founding of the Republic of Korea. It is truly an honor to be part of this important occasion, sharing the excitement and emotions that were felt that day 79 years ago. I pay tribute to our forebears who made the ultimate sacrifice for their nation's independence and the patriots who dedicated themselves to founding the nation. In our fight to achieve independence, Los Angeles holds such a special place. In fact, the city of Los Angeles was the first city in the United States to acknowledge Korea as an independent country. It was right here at the Los Angeles City Hall that a special ceremony was held and the Korean flag, Taegukki, was raised high on August 29, 1942, three years before our independence. The flag-raising ceremony was broadcast across the world, and many states and cities followed suit after Los Angeles. It was truly a key moment in building the momentum of the independence movement, and I appreciate the city remembers the key leader of the ceremony, Charles Ho Kim, by naming a school, a public school, after him. I believe that it's no coincidence that the Korean government established its first overseas presence, the Korean Council General to which I probably belong, right here in Los Angeles back in November of 1948. This was even before the resumption of diplomatic relations between the two countries in 1949. Ladies and gentlemen, Korean American community here in Southern California with a history spanning 120 years has established itself as an essential and esteemed cornerstone in American society. The Koreatown in L.A. is known to be the biggest across the world, outside Korea, of course. This is the work of many unsung heroes in the community of which are proud. But Koreatown is not just for the Korean community. Across the town, it's easy to spot signboards in three languages, Korean, English, and Espanol. And it's no secret, as Councilwoman Hutt said, you can find one of the best Ohaikan or Salvadoran or quizás ecoturiano restaurants in Koreatown. Some say, some say that Koreatown is becoming a misnomer for its diversity, but I wish to refute that. It's what makes Koreatown attractive, being a stellar example of coexistence with other communities, embracing fully our neighbors of different cultures and backgrounds. On a final note, I extend my sincere gratitude to all members of the Los Angeles City Council for commemorating Korea's Liberation Day and organizing this unforgettable ceremony today. May this be a celebration where everyone, regardless of race or creed, can find joy.
Thank you, Ms. Han. And the next person I'm bringing up is no stranger to any of you, Steve King, Executive Vice President of CAFLA.
Good morning. Good morning, honorable members of the City Council. It is with great honor and pleasure that I stand here to represent the Korean American community in Los Angeles and to convey our sincere appreciation to all of you for your recognition of the 79th Korean Independence Day. Especially want to thank Councilmembers John Lee and Councilmember Heather Hutt for always championing our issues that impact our community. The city of Los Angeles is home to the largest ethnic Korean diaspora in the United States, and I'm especially proud that Los Angeles is also home to the largest Koreatown in this country. From the majestic Korean Friendship Bell in San Pedro, the historic Heng Sa Dan House, thank you, Councilmember Marquise Harris Dawson, for helping to save that historic piece of monument for our community, to the vibrant neighborhood that Councilmember Heather Hutt described earlier, the Korean American community is part of the beautiful tapestry of Los Angeles. The Korean Independence Day word is called Kwangbokjhar in Korean, and each of the three Korean characters have a special meaning. So Kwang means light, Pok means restoration, and Jar means holiday. So the Korean word for Korean Independence Day symbolizes renewal and restoration. And on Thursday, August 15th, which is next Thursday, the Korean American Federation, along with many other Korean American organizations, will be celebrating the Korean Independence Day in Councilmember Tim McCoster's district at the Korean Friendship Bell, and I hope many of you can join us for this special occasion. Lastly, I want to reiterate our community's strong commitment of partnership to moving our city forward in many of the key issues, including homelessness, public safety, and equity. Thank you, and happy Korean Independence Day.
Thank you, Steve. And now it's my honor to bring up Junbe. And now it's my honor to bring up Junbe Kim, President of the Heritage of Korean Independence.
Good morning, Councilmembers. My name is Helen Kim, and on behalf of Heritage of Korea Independence Foundation President Chester Kim, I will be reading his prepared speech in English. President Kim is a third-generation descendant of freedom fighter Chang Sung Sun, his grandfather. And I'm proud to say that there are three generations of descendants of Chang Sung Sun here today. I'm the fourth generation and the eldest daughter of President Chester Kim. And also here today is Brandon Byun, fifth-generation grandson of Chester Kim, who is also the first-generation Korean-American born in America. Onto President Kim's speech. Hello, Councilmembers. My name is Chester Kim, and I'm the President of Heritage of Korea Independence of USA. Heritage of Independence is the only descendant organization that is recognized and certified by the Ministry of Patriots and Veterans Affairs of South Korean Government worldwide. Our membership is strictly limited to descendants of the distinctly recognized and certified freedom fighters who fought for the independence of South Korea. I would like to first express my deep gratitude for City Councilmembers, especially Councilwoman John Lee and Councilwoman Heather Hutt, for allowing this recognition and declaration today to honor those who dedicated themselves and sacrificed their lives for fighting for long-awaited independence from 35 years of Japanese occupation. This year marks the 79th anniversary of that independence, a significant year to reflect once again on our mother country's self-reliance and spirit of independence. August 15th, 1945, was the day my ancestors regained their light, this light that symbolizes the autonomy of Korea as a standalone nation, and I believe that this autonomy manifests in three ways: nation with an independent history, nation with independent economy, and independent diplomacy. Without this independent spirit of our patriotic ancestors, the liberation of Korea would not have been possible. It was through the timeless, tireless efforts of independent activists who sacrificed their lives fighting for the cause of reclaiming our mother country back from the tortuous 35 years that our people would finally regain the light of independence. At our foundation, we currently have over 50 direct descendants, all wearing the red satchel today, and 200 family members, by far the largest of its kind organization outside of South Korea. To date, a total of 16,410 independent patriots have been awarded, verified, and recognized as freedom fighters by the Korean government, with 333 of them residing in the United States. However, more than half, 178, patriots have yet to receive their medals and commendations because majority of them have already passed. Therefore, we are currently on a mission to find that, find at least their descendants as soon as possible so that the recognition and commendations can finally find their family lineage where they belong. The difficulty of finding these descendants is finding, is like finding a needle in a haystack, since majority of the descendants no longer speak Korean language, and the only audience that would be interested in our search was through Korean-speaking media outlets. Opportunities like today, and the opportunities provided by all councilmembers here, is very powerful and helpful in outreach to English-only speaking descendants by providing an outlet for recognition and exposure. I sincerely hope that today's declaration not only is heard by the attendees of today's events, but also those not-yet-found, proud descendants who will one day be recognized and will stand here before you to celebrate the Korea independence. Thank you.
And for the last speaker, we're going to bring up Carol Lee, President of the Samyeon Women's Association, for some brief remarks.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, councilmembers, and all the staff members in the City Hall, all the visitors. My name is Carol Lee, President of March 1st Women's Association USA. Our nonprofit Women's Association was established in 1981 from the March 1st movement in 1919 under the Japanese colonial period. And we are here to serve the Los Angeles community with patriotic pride as Korean-American women. I thank you for giving us this wonderful opportunity to commemorate the 79th Korean Independence Day on August 15th, which is going to be next week. After my speech, I would like to present our youth, who's keeping up with the Korean traditional spirit instrument, performance. Please enjoy, and God bless you all. Thank you.
And so, you see, colleagues, this is not only a part of, obviously, Korean history, but I appreciate you allowing us to recognize this every year because it's truly part, as Ms. Han said, part of Los Angeles' history, the independence movement, and what the city did to start the fire, to spark that independence in South Korea. So I'd just like to, now, I believe that we have a presentation if the kids from the youth leadership, we have a traditional Korean performance by the Youth Leadership Teenagers Group in Koreatown. And while they're getting set up, I would like to, I apologize, Ms. Han, please join us. Councilmember Hutt and I, and along with all the other councilmembers, would like to present to you this, for the Council General's appreciation for your work in helping us celebrate Korean Independence Day.
Wonderful. And we also have some members on the queue, so while they're getting set up, I will call on Councilwoman Rahm. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Councilwoman Rahm for a moment before the senators. Go ahead.
Well, just very briefly, I just wanted to thank Councilmembers Lee and Hutt for bringing this recognition here today. Happy Korean Independence Day. It's the same day as Indian Independence Day, actually, so it's really, I hadn't realized that until today, which is fascinating. And I just wanted to say thank you also for the history lesson that you shared today and the connections between Los Angeles and Korean history. I had no idea. It is really exciting to, to know this information and to know that this city has played a role in the history of Korea as well, and for us to be able to recognize it today. So thank you to all of you for being here.
All right, back to you, Councilmember Lee.
Well, thank you very much. We will move out of the way so everyone can enjoy the performance. Again, councilmembers, thank you so much for always allowing us to celebrate this incredible, important day in our history.
Thank you so much. Aren't they great?
Yeah.
All right, next, we have, our next presentation is going to be led by Councilwoman Heather Hutt. We welcome her to the podium, and she's going to recognize the Sri Lanka Foundation. Councilwoman Hutt, I believe, is going to be joined by Councilmember Price, and the floor is yours.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Is the mic on? Can you hear me? Okay. Good morning.
Yes.
Today, I'm truly honored to be with you all to celebrate Sri Lankan Day. And we have a very special person with us today, Dr. Walter J. Singay, warmly referred to as Dr. J. Dr. J. is a remarkable man who's left an indelible mark on the lives of so many people in CD10, as well as across the city. He's more than just his name, but a testament to the power of compassion and dedication to serving others. His journey from Sri Lanka to Los Angeles is a story of resilience. Dr. J. arrived in the United States in 1962 and immediately dedicated himself to public health and social services. His groundbreaking research at the City of Hope Medical Research Center laid the foundation for advancement in medical science. His commitment extended beyond the lab. He was a tireless advocate for those in need and established medical clinics across downtown L.A., provided critical healthcare services to our underserved community. His philanthropic endeavors led him to establish the Sri Lankan Foundation and the Los Angeles Medical Center Foundation, two nonprofits that provide necessary medical support to hundreds of individuals as well as families. And his work with the New Economics for Women empowered many women to achieve financial independence and create a brighter future for themselves and their children. Dr. J.'s contributions have significantly benefited our entire city. To this day, he continues to support our fire department, donating beds and tools, has donated security cameras in MacArthur Park, toys for community events around the holidays, robotics equipments for our schools, and so much more. Dr. J.'s unwavering dedication and support to our city is an inspiration to us all. His legacy is etched not just in the annals of our history, but the hearts of the countless... but the hearts of the countless individuals whose lives that he's changed for the better. but the hearts of the countless individuals whose lives that he's changed for the better. Today, it brings me extraordinary joy Today, it brings me extraordinary joy to really look at the work that he's done to really look at the work that he's done and the contributions to our public health system and social services, and the contributions to our public health system and social services, as well as the way he's empowered our community. as well as the way he's empowered our community. Dr. J., thank you for showing us what it means to be a true champion for those in need. Dr. J., thank you for showing us what it means to be a true champion for those in need. Oh, there you are. Oh, there you are. As we celebrate Sri Lankan Day, As we celebrate Sri Lankan Day, let us also celebrate the work and services of Dr. J. let us also celebrate the work and services of Dr. J. May we continue to draw inspiration from his amazing work and commitment May we continue to draw inspiration from his amazing work and commitment to creating a more equitable and compassionate Los Angeles. to creating a more equitable and compassionate Los Angeles. And now, I would like to bring up Councilmember Kern Price. And now, I would like to bring up Councilmember Kern Price.
Thank you, Councilmember Hutt. Thank you, Councilmember Hutt. To family, friends, neighbors, colleagues. To family, friends, neighbors, colleagues. You know, the thing that sets us apart, us being the United States, is our diversity. You know, the thing that sets us apart, us being the United States, is our diversity. It's our diversity, and it's exemplified certainly here in Los Angeles. It's our diversity, and it's exemplified certainly here in Los Angeles. Today, we have the honor of celebrating the work and contributions Today, we have the honor of celebrating the work and contributions of our strong and resilient community of Sri Lankans. of our strong and resilient community of Sri Lankans. And even more specifically, the immeasurable work of Dr. Walter J. And even more specifically, the immeasurable work of Dr. Walter J. Inspired by his father, who was also a well-respected physician in Sri Lanka, Inspired by his father, who was also a well-respected physician in Sri Lanka, Dr. J. has built a distinguished career characterized by exceptional skill and compassion. Dr. J. has built a distinguished career characterized by exceptional skill and compassion. His career spans several prestigious institutions, His career spans several prestigious institutions, showcasing his extensive experience and commitment in medicine. showcasing his extensive experience and commitment in medicine. In LA, Dr. J.'s leadership has been pivotal. In LA, Dr. J.'s leadership has been pivotal. He has played a key role in advancing healthcare initiatives, as we've heard, He has played a key role in advancing healthcare initiatives, as we've heard, and improving community health by ensuring the most vulnerable people in our society have access to a doctor. and improving community health by ensuring the most vulnerable people in our society have access to a doctor. Beyond his clinical work, he's been a mentor to many, Beyond his clinical work, he's been a mentor to many, shaping the future of healthcare through his guidance and leadership. shaping the future of healthcare through his guidance and leadership. Dr. J.'s career is distinguished by numerous accolades, Dr. J.'s career is distinguished by numerous accolades, acknowledging his significant contributions to medicine and healthcare and the community at large. acknowledging his significant contributions to medicine and healthcare and the community at large. His career, his integrity, his kindness, his dedication His career, his integrity, his kindness, his dedication have earned him deep respect and admiration from both colleagues and the community at large. have earned him deep respect and admiration from both colleagues and the community at large. And so, we honor Dr. J.'s remarkable achievements And so, we honor Dr. J.'s remarkable achievements and his lasting impact on both medicine and the city of LA. and his lasting impact on both medicine and the city of LA. His legacy of service and leadership continues to serve and to inspire us all. His legacy of service and leadership continues to serve and to inspire us all. Congratulations, Dr. J. Congratulations, Dr. J.
Did you want to say a few words, Dr. J? Did you want to say a few words, Dr. J?
Yeah, I'm just, uh... Yeah, I'm just, uh... Thank you, both Councilmen, and also Hernandez Council Lady. Thank you, both Councilmen, and also Hernandez Council Lady. I'm extremely grateful to all of you. I'm extremely grateful to all of you. This is 50 years later This is 50 years later since I last had a beautiful key to the city since I last had a beautiful key to the city from the Sam Yote, the great mayor of Los Angeles, 1964. from the Sam Yote, the great mayor of Los Angeles, 1964. So, since then, I've been totally involved in social work. So, since then, I've been totally involved in social work. That time, I was a student at UCLA when Mayor Sam Yote gave me the key to the city. That time, I was a student at UCLA when Mayor Sam Yote gave me the key to the city. And I'm extremely honored by today's commendations, And I'm extremely honored by today's commendations, and I'm very grateful to the whole city council for making this city a great city. and I'm very grateful to the whole city council for making this city a great city. Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. So, we have a certificate for you. So, we have a certificate for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And a certificate to commemorate. And a certificate to commemorate.
And we have some members on the queue as well. And we have some members on the queue as well. Ready? Ready? So, as soon as they're done with the pictures, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Hernandez for a few words. So, as soon as they're done with the pictures, I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Hernandez for a few words. Okay, Councilwoman Hernandez. Okay, Councilwoman Hernandez.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Council President. Thank you so much, Councilwoman Heather Hutt and Councilman Kern Price Thank you so much, Councilwoman Heather Hutt and Councilman Kern Price for bringing this presentation to us today, for bringing this presentation to us today, for uplifting Dr. J. and all of his work in the Sri Lankan community. for uplifting Dr. J. and all of his work in the Sri Lankan community. Dr. J., my deepest gratitude for the decades of social work and investment Dr. J., my deepest gratitude for the decades of social work and investment that you have made throughout the city of Los Angeles, that you have made throughout the city of Los Angeles, but in particular, MacArthur Park. but in particular, MacArthur Park. You know, this city is better because of the work that you've done as well. You know, this city is better because of the work that you've done as well. And so, I just greatly appreciate you and your dedication And so, I just greatly appreciate you and your dedication to working with the city for these many years to make it a better place to live. to working with the city for these many years to make it a better place to live. So, thank you so much, and again, colleagues, thank you for uplifting Dr. J. and Sri Lanka. So, thank you so much, and again, colleagues, thank you for uplifting Dr. J. and Sri Lanka. It's just a beautiful, beautiful presentation today. Thank you. It's just a beautiful, beautiful presentation today. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilwoman Hutt to close. Councilwoman Hutt to close.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Councilmember Hernandez. In honor of Sri Lankan Day, we're having a celebration in the forecourt In honor of Sri Lankan Day, we're having a celebration in the forecourt with traditional dancing and food for everyone to enjoy. with traditional dancing and food for everyone to enjoy. So, we will be raising the Sri Lankan flag in celebration of this historic day. So, we will be raising the Sri Lankan flag in celebration of this historic day. Meet us in the forecourt. Thank you so much. Meet us in the forecourt. Thank you so much.
Wonderful. Thank you so much for this presentation. Wonderful. Thank you so much for this presentation. As they're leaving the podium, I would ask Mr. De León As they're leaving the podium, I would ask Mr. De León to head toward the podium for our final presentation for today. to head toward the podium for our final presentation for today.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
To commemorate Ecuadorian Independence Day. To commemorate Ecuadorian Independence Day. Okay, Mr. De León, the floor is yours. Welcome for our final presentation for the day.
You say when, Mr. President?
When?
Okay. Good morning to our distinguished guests and members of the Ecuadorian community here with us today. Colleagues, today, it is an honor to be here to commemorate this historic day, the 215th anniversary of Ecuadorians' courageous fight for independence. Now, on August 10th of 1809, the people of Ecuador took a bold stand against Spanish colonial rule, marking the beginning of a journey toward freedom that would forever shape the destiny of their nation. Today is not only a reminder of the resilience and determination of the Ecuadorian people, but also one of the enduring spirit of independence that continues to inspire us all. Today, we celebrate a historic milestone, but we're also recognizing the vibrant and dynamic Ecuadorian community that has made Los Angeles its home. Your contributions to our city culturally, socially, and economically enrich the diverse tapestry that makes Los Angeles one of the most extraordinary cities in the world. The parade down Broadway Avenue, which culminated this past Sunday at the heart of our city, Olveda Street, is a testament to the strong cultural ties and the vibrant heritage that the Ecuadorian community brings to the city of LA. This parade is a celebration of tradition, of values, and the unwavering spirit of civic engagement that our community, that your community embodies. This year, Mr. President and colleagues, we honor the memory, the memory of Elba Berus, a beloved leader and the founder of the Ecuadorian Parade and Festival in Los Angeles. Bravo, Elba! Her legacy lives on in the continued success and growth of these events. And remember her, and we remember her as a pillar of the Ecuadorian community in our great city. As we celebrate Ecuadorian Independence Day here at City Hall, we just don't reflect on the past, but we envision a future where the Ecuadorian community continues to thrive and contribute to the ongoing story of LA. Congratulations to La Comisión Permanente de Fiestas Patrias Ecuatorianas and the entire Ecuadorian community for organizing such a wonderful series of events this week. Buenos dias. Es un honor, señor presidente, y mis colegas del Consilio de Los Ángeles, estar aquí con ustedes mientras comemoramos 215 años, el aniversario de la valiente lucha de los ecuatorianos por su independencia. Un aplauso por... Y que viva Ecuador! El 10 de agosto del año 1809, el pueblo ecuatoriano se levantó con valentía contra el dominio colonial español, marcando el comienzo de un viaje hacia la libertad que definirá sin lugar a dudas para siempre el destino de su país, de su gran nación. Hoy día, no solamente celebramos un hito histórico, sino también reconocemos a la vibrante y la dinámica comunidad ecuatoriana que ha hecho Los Ángeles su hogar. Sus contribuciones a nuestra ciudad culturales, sociales y económicas enriquecen, enriquecen el universo tejido que hace Los Ángeles un lugar extraordinario. Que queda muy claro, y quiero empatizar y subir al lo siguiente, este año honramos la memoria de una gran lideresa ecuatoriana, la señora Elba Berus. Una lideresa muy querida, y la fundadora de Lesfile y el Festival Ecuatoriano de Los Ángeles. Al celebrar el Día de Independencia de Ecuador aquí en el Ayuntamiento, no solamente reflexionamos sobre el pasado, sino también miremos hacia el futuro en que la comunidad ecuatoriana continúe prosperando y contribuyendo a las arcas presupuestales, a la historia aquí en la Ciudad de Los Ángeles. Juntos construimos una ciudad que celebramos su diversidad, que honra su historia, y mira al futuro con esperanza y con unidad. Felicitaciones a la Comisión Permanente de las Fiestas Patrias Ecuatorianas. Me siento bien orgulloso de estar aquí con ustedes. Ustedes tuvieron la valentía de hacer todo lo posible para no cruzar más una sola frontera, sino muchas fronteras, no, allí a este país. No pino limosas, sino a prosperar aquí en este gran país. Así que las contribuciones ecuatorianas, como ese famoso riquísimo servicio ecuatoriano, este, hasta me da mucho apetito en este momento. Estamos aquí presentes, los ecuatorianos, y gracias a ustedes que forman parte de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles, que somos una ciudad mucho más rica por la presencia de los ecuatorianos. Así que felicidades a los ecuatorianos, y que viva Ecuador! With that, Mr. President, I also want to bring up from La Comisión Permanente de las Fiestas Patrias Ecuatorianas, el señor mentor, Paredes. Por favor, señor Paredes, adelanta el micrófono.
Good morning, councilmembers. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to explain the historical review for our independence. I'm going to read in Spanish. El año 1809 es, en América del Sur, la catapulta de las ideas de libertad. El mundo ha visto el nacer de los Estados Unidos 34 años antes, en 1775, y la toma de la bastilla 20 años antes, en 1789. Pero mientras las ideas de libertad, igualdad, fraternidad llenan los corazones de esperanza, el ego de Napoleón hace deponer a Fernando VII de España y darle a su hermano José de Napoleón el trono de España y el control de las colonias españolas, incluyendo el del territorio de lo que hoy es el Ecuador. Los patriotas de Quito ven la oportunidad de conseguir la propia libertad y se deciden por una estrategia militar y diplomática en la supuestamente jurada lealtad al rey, pero cuyo fin era el de lograr la autonomía sin temor a represalias. El 10 de agosto de 1809, los patriotas crean la Junta Soberana de San Francisco de Quito, declarando su apoyo a Fernando VII y su rechazo al hermano de Napoleón. Pero esta junta soberana también se autootorga la responsabilidad del cuidado de las tierras del rey hasta su potencial regreso al trono, e impone al mismo tiempo que las autoridades del rey cesen sus funciones. Agosto se convierte en un mes de júbilo en 1809, pero un año más tarde se torna en lágrimas de sangre, el 2 de agosto de 1810. Justamente en el día de Nuestra Señora de Los Ángeles, las autoridades reales, entendiendo la probable escapatoria y excusa artificiosa, aprestan y condenan a muerte a los patriotas del 10 de agosto de 1809. Agosto es un mes que conecta conciencialmente a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles con Ecuador. La bandera del Ecuador con su amarillo, azul y rojo lleva en sí la incomparable, la fuerza incomparable del sol ecuatorial, el azul intenso del océano Pacífico y la heroica sangre derramada por nuestros patriotas. Este primer grito de independencia nos recuerda que aún en la actualidad, en Ecuador y en toda América, que la lucha por la libertad es incesante y de valientes. Escrito en Los Ángeles el 6 de agosto de 2024 por la poeta ecuatoriano americana Karina Galvez. Muchas gracias.
Mr. President, as we celebrate the culture and the independence of the Ecuadorian community, and more specifically, the Ecuadorian, the nation of Ecuador, I also want to quickly recognize a few folks who are present here today. Just want to give them that recognition that they deserve. Fabián Germán Derado en La Comisión Permanente de Fiestas Patrias Ecuatorianas de Los Ángeles también. Este, saludos, por favor, compañeros. Si gusta, se puede dar algo muy breve, por favor.
En nombre de la Comisión Permanente de Fiestas Patrias y en nombre del pueblo ecuatoriano, muchas gracias a la Ciudad de Los Ángeles por permitirnos hacer de la Ciudad de Los Ángeles nuestro hogar. Los llevamos en el corazón.
Thank you to the city of Los Angeles for allowing us to make our home of the city our home.
Y también, I'll take these pictures here too, but also want to recognize Carly Bustos, as well as Melanie Urresta, who are some of the reines de las fiestas ecuatorianas. También, if you raise your hands, so they can see you. Melanie and Carly, un aplauso, por favor. And with that, las fotos.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much.
All right. That concludes our presentations for today. I believe before we move to public comment, we can dispense with item two. Is that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. Let's put item two before. Do you need to read that in? Item two? Or can we just open the roll? Okay, let's, we'll take up item two. Seeing those speakers on the queue, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tally the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay. Anything else before we move to public comment?
No, sir. Shall I read the instructions?
Sure.
As indicated on the agenda, members of the public wishing to offer public comment should call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star 6 to unmute. Again, call 669-254-5252 and use meeting ID number 1605358466, then press pound. Press pound again when prompted for participant ID. Once admitted into the meeting, press star 9 to request to speak. When it's your turn to speak in automated Zoom voice, we'll ask you to press star 6 to unmute.
To people providing public comment, when it is your turn to speak, either at the podium or on the phone, please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak to.
please state which of the agenda items you would like to speak to. You will have one minute per item, up to three minutes total for the items open for public comment. We will tell you when your time is up. When speaking on the agenda items, you must be on topic. Our goal is to get through as many speakers as we can. If you are not on topic, or if we cannot tell whether you are on topic, you will get one brief warning from me or the president. At that point, you need to get immediately and clearly on topic. If you do not do so, or if you again stray off topic, you will forfeit the rest of your speaking time, and we will move on to the next speaker. The items open for public comment on the agenda are items nine through twelve, item thirteen on the continuation agenda, and item number twenty-one from Wednesday's meeting, which is being reconsidered. So again, the items that are open for public comment are items nine through twelve, item number thirteen on the continuation agenda, and item number twenty-one from Wednesday's agenda that is being reconsidered. Members of the public may also speak for up to one minute for general public comment. During general public comment, members of the public may speak to any of the other items or anything else in the city's subject matter jurisdiction. For members of the public calling in, when it is your turn to speak, an automated message from Zoom will prompt you to press star six to unmute yourself. If you do not do so, council staff will prompt you once more. At that point, you need to immediately unmute yourself, or unfortunately, you will forfeit your time and we will have to move on to the next caller. Finally, because of a brief time delay between the live meeting and the broadcast, two things are important. First, while waiting for your turn to speak, please keep an ear to the phone so you know in real time when it is your turn to press star six to unmute. Second, if you're listening to this meeting on another device, please turn down the volume on that device immediately when it's your turn to speak. Between the time delay and feedback, it will cause a great deal of confusion if you continue to listen on your other devices. Thank you.
Okay, um, there's a whole bunch of names on here and not, you know, one tenth the number of people in the room, and I suspect that a lot of these, they're not even very creative. A lot of these are bogus names that someone put on just to disrupt this meeting. So, given that there are only a few people in the room, I would ask anyone who wishes to speak in this meeting, uh, just make your way to the left side of the room, stage right, house left, and you will be given a chance to speak. Everyone who is here in the room will be given a chance to speak, but I will not, uh, read or subject anyone to having to read all of these bogus names. So, let's just line up if you're interested in speaking, and we will take folks in the order which they line up. And you can state your name, or whatever name you like, when you get to the podium.
I will stop every ten seconds to give our translator a time, is that correct?
So which items would you like to speak to?
All items.
Okay, and if you...
Like last Tuesday, Bloomingfield told me...
Okay, enough of this. You speak to the items. If you request a translator, we will, we'll do our best to find a translator. Go ahead, sir.
So do I stop or do I not stop?
No, you don't stop, just keep going.
So I do not stop?
Your time is running now.
Okay.
We know you're here to disrupt, go ahead.
Oh, okay, so I do not stop? What, that's really weird, okay. Uh, I would like to move on to the next item, which is item number ten. So, uh, that is item nine and ten. So now, let's move on to agenda item, uh, the Kevin DeLeon item. Um, is that a Kevin DeLeon item, which is DeLeon Park? Um, uh, number, item number thirteen. So, in the, uh, in this item, it's about the improvement, the safety, uh, community of the minority hills within city council, uh, identify potential, uh, safety improvement. I'm here to support our council member DeLeon. In this, uh, community, if we need more, uh, safety, so we have to make sure, uh, people are safe on the street. We cannot have this community, uh, having a weekly street takeover. We cannot have this community, uh, women getting robbed, uh, in the late evening. So, you, when we talking about safety improvement, I wish we can have more LAPD officer patrol on the street. Therefore, um, there's street takeover, there's corporate theft, there's a looter, rioter, robbery, will no longer have a chance. I'm here to support council member DeLeon. I'm support, I'm here to support all of the street safety, uh, program improvement.
And before you begin general public comment, just thank you for identifying the items you're speaking to. So go ahead, you have one minute for a general public comment.
Uh, general public comment. [singing] [singing] Support council member Kevin DeLeon.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
I'm just doing general public comment.
Okay.
Carrie Elliott, CD, uh, ten.
Okay, you have one minute.
Uh, my son died in 1992. The, uh, I did Public Records Act request, and for seven years I went to the murder, um, they called it a murder, uh, cold case murder file. And, uh, I kept believing that all this time I'm going to get some information. And when they did release it, I was in Panama, I was living in Panama. And I'm reading, uh, uh, this, anyway. Uh, they actually had a suspect. They never told me they had anyone that was a suspect for murdering my kid. Why wouldn't they do that? It was all a lie, the whole thing is a lie. Um, the, this guy here, Detective Tinker says that the, the person that killed my son was in the party and argued with him. My son had no alcohol and drugs, no alcohol at a party at ten at night. Okay, that's pretty amazing for a seventeen-year-old. Anyway, um, I'm going to the Board of Police Commissioners and telling this on Tuesday.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Hi, I'm Donald Harland, I'd like to speak on agenda items two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, general comment.
So, a lot of those items are not open for public comment. Again, the items that are open for public comment today are items number nine through twelve, item thirteen on the continuation agenda, and item twenty-one, which is being reconsidered from Wednesday.
Uh, nine and, uh, ten and eleven.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items, go ahead.
Okay. Uh, I was concerned about the, uh, city council approving stars on this Hollywood Walk of Fame. Seems to be a big problem with that. I'm not, I'm not saying something about Tim Burton, but, uh, there's a lot of fake history. People that don't really deserve stars in the Hollywood Walk of Fame, and the city council's making it worse. Uh, there's a large fake history with Tim Burton. I, I know there's a real guy and then there's a fake guy. And you guys are giving the stars to the fake guy. I, I don't know, I don't really know about Tim Burton, but I'm saying that there's a lot of celebrities like that, you know that. Okay, and the, uh, there's a lien on, uh, number ten says, lien on 148 West 39th Street. Uh, you note that to blame the people and not the property. Uh, and, uh, I would have comments about, generally about the, the developments on those items, those real estate developments on the remaining items, is that, uh, there's no Department of City planning. Uh, there's no, I'm order, I'm directing the city to investigate the state clearinghouse, that that's not real. To use full amount of money you need to send the meanest lawyers after the fake state clearinghouse? Also, uh, some of these projects that are in these agenda items are sponsored by the Office of Controller, that something happened at the Office of Controller and they're trying to doc, dump documents on the city? And they're no good. Uh, I'm directing the city to investigate that and, uh, check, do a forensic exam on everybody involved if you have to. Make sure you get everybody's information. Uh, several of the agenda items are, like, somebody in the state thinks they're going to sell real estate and nothing legal about what they're doing, uh, they're committing a crime.
Mister Harland, I'm not sure which item you're speaking to, and you've used your one minute on item ten, so please move on to one of the other items.
Okay. The, uh, beautification by the conservation corps, that's really nice. I like people cleaning up, that's fine. Uh, general comment?
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Uh, I was concerned about agenda item number two, uh, the disaster responses. You might have noticed all the villains from the federal government and the television shows jumping into the disaster response. Uh, they don't need housing, too. None of, nobody from the United States government comes over here and gets free housing. You know, they, they get a, they stay in the hotel or something. You know what I mean? There's no permanent housing for disaster response. Really, I need some seriously bad law enforcement to go after those guys in there. Uh, agenda item, I'm talking about agenda item number two. FBI, bad FBI, ooh boy, FBI, real bad, jumping in there. Uh, not in disaster response, emergency response, but there's also, uh, supplies and everything they're looting, you know? Uh, stealing tractors and stuff, real bad. Uh, you know, item number three is what I'm concerned about, no. Uh, you know, crazy people in the state government, there's like five Gavin Newsom's impeaching each other, and everybody wants their own controller or trying to state clearinghouse stuff, and no, they're dead.
Next speaker? And as we wait for the next speaker to come to the podium, just to reiterate what the chair said, if you would like to speak, please make sure that you are lined up on the, your left-hand side of the council chambers. Good morning, if you could please remind us of the name you signed up under and the items you'd like to speak to?
Good morning, honorable team. Uh, my name is Julian Alexander Macara. I'm speaking on public comment and agenda time.
Oh, sorry, public comment and what?
I was in the middle of making that statement, sir. So, public comment and agenda points number eleven and twelve, um, from this agenda meeting.
Okay, so you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
Thank you very much. This more so is, uh, for Councilwoman One and the council members one, fourteen, thirteen, and nine. Um, I've submitted this request, uh, to the city clerk's office, and I have been getting, attempting to follow our city's protocol to communicate with our elected officials, who are not making eye contact with me right now, thank you. Um, reading the message verbatim, says, "This campaign was initially launched in mid-June. Since then, we have been unable to effectively speak with any level of our elected regional governments. Uh, as we are all aware, the current state of our times are not ideal. Kevin DeLeon, I'm talking to you. The effect of our elected officials, who is not paying attention, um, is the effect of our elected officials neglect, is what we see right here, and responding has led to inadvertent consequences that were preventable. And this is including and not limited to death of my friends. I tagged you on that post, Ms. Eunice Hernandez, I never got a response. Neither representatives of our council districts nor members of our city's administration have collaboratively worked with us to authorize diligent and new community development protocols. I'm not sure if you're aware, but the mental health of our members in this city is not well. The individuals behind me, that none, none of you are paying attention to. This is a direct reflection that any foreign agency, any foreign institution, sir, this is not funny, sir, DeLeon. Any foreign institution looking at us through these cameras is going to see weakness. Now I know military, I know fire department, I am not done, so I am going to continue. How, and this is per the, this is the public comment, this is the one minute.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
However, I did receive notice at a public hearing for a new multimillion-dollar dwelling right behind my family home, uh, within council district fourteen, the case number ZA or HA 2024 2301 CU 1 HCA. So I'm unable to speak to my council representatives, but lobbyists are able to get forward planning for housing development that should take years, that it's taking weeks. I have been trying to speak to my council members for three months. Pertaining to agenda, agendas eleven and twelve, I have solicited with council district one's team, chief of staff and other representatives, including the mayor, for the value vocation academic leadership urban entrepreneur program. And that is a beautification operation, ladies, this is not funny. Um, you should really take in mind that people speaking read body language. I was an ABA therapist for over ten years. If anyone here has kids, I take care of your special needs kids. For three years, I was a firefighter for night, for Station Twelve. Captain Navarro trained me. This is dereliction of duty. Thank you.
Thank you, Speaker. Next speaker? Thank you, sir. Next speaker.
Good morning, and which... Sir, this is your first and only warning, please do not disrupt the next speaker. Sorry, sir, go ahead, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, general public comment.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Uh, my name is Najee Ali, uh, Mister Chairperson, honorable members of city council. Uh, I'm here only because my name was slandered here a week ago. One thing that Reverend Jesse, Jesse Jackson told me thirty years ago, you can't be an activist if you have thin skin. So, I have thick skin, believe me. I've never addressed these false accusations of me being a wife beater, a rapist, uh, which is just nonsense, but I'm here today just to set the record once and for all here in front of everyone. I, I've never hit my wife. A city hall investigation was done by Jeff Guarrel, and she told him that never happened. Second thing, falsely arrested forty years ago, I'm sixty-one, for a crime I never even committed, and was, was released. So, when people say, oh, he's a rapist, they don't tell the part, oh, well, he was falsely, falsely arrested and released. Uh, no charges, never went to court. So I just wanted to just put that out there for everyone to hear.
Speaker, your time has expired. Speaker, your time has expired, we need to move on to the next speaker.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker?
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
All items and public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for public comment? Go ahead with the items.
Okay. Anyway, let's talk about the Tim Burton and the Hollywood Walk of Fame, yes. I, I like these things, at 6600 Hollywood Boulevard. Why? Because it's a great way, the Jimmy Swaggart way, to have the prostitutes instead of walking up and down the street. Hey, meet me over there at 6600 Hollywood Boulevard, the Tim Burton star. It's a great locator. I, I mean, I'm surprised we didn't think of this earlier. After all, we know he can't go home to his wife, he can't stand strange, so we have to have prostitutes, and what better place than Hollywood to have these streetwalkers, just for the good Reverend. Now, let's go to another item. I see, uh, one of your liens, you actually did a $3,029 and two cent reduction. I can't believe, what, what's, what's going on? Is, is there a sickness going on that, that you actually quit fucking over the people and actually letting them work the liens out? I, I, I just can't believe it, but it's happening, that you actually are kind of doing something right. Now, we have this overdose awareness, come on, folks. We... We, we could really spend our money better than that. Maybe actually helping people that are overdosing and maybe some more Narcan or whatever to co, to counteract the fentanyl. I met a homeless person and later I bumped into her former boyfriend and yes, she had died of fentanyl and her mouth was foamed and everything else, real gross thing. But maybe we should be showing pictures of things like that so people know what they look like. We have, oh, we're actually gonna do something in council district one. I can't believe Mr. Lee's actually in on this. Eunice does a decent job. Gets, gets things done as well as that is a neglected district. I live in North Hollywood and, and the Sun Valley end and that's neglected. So I know what it's like when you live in a neglected area. You don't get your stuff like they do in Encino or Woodland Hills or Brentwood or all the, the high, highfalutin areas. You know, you just get fucked, that's all there is to it. But I'm glad, after all, if Sadio was still on there, he'd be out getting his dick wet and not doing a thing. So Eunice is a hard, is a workhorse.
Speaker, you need to stick to the agenda items or I'm gonna move you to general public comment?
Well, we're talking about district one and district one getting stuff done and who, who's the workhorse and who is the showhorse? There's a big difference in L.A. And we're a town mainly of show horses, not workhorses. So someone gets his dick wet like Sadio is a showhorse. Now, let's go.
General public comment?
Okay, uh, we have, guess who's running for mayor again? Yes, Tony Villar, that's his Christian-born name from his Catholic Church of false doctrines. He doesn't like to lose more often, but guess what? Maybe he shouldn't run. He, in his eight years, he did only two things right. He defeated Jim Hahn, the worst fucking mayor we ever had. Even worse than Frank Shaw who got recalled during the thirties. And he removed Rick Caruso from the police commission. I mean, is that a record worth making somebody governor? Are you really kidding me, folks? I mean, the other Tony, Tony Thurman's probably more qualified than Tony Villar. Now, our leading, that Aleni broad, she's one of those billboard broads, gets free billboards just like Monica Rodriguez or Mommy Barger or Lindsay Horvath. I mean, she probably has a better chance, but old Tony, he, he gonna lose her. Boy, he gonna lose a bigger.
Good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Yes, go ahead, you have three minutes for the items first.
Item number one, Public Works Committee Report regarding.
So, item number one is not open for public comment. If you were listening earlier in the meeting, which you are here for.
Then let's go to number nine, asshole, number nine, number nine. Sixty-nine U, number nine. Now, on number nine, communication from a dick engineer regarding Tim Burton and Beetlejuice, 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 right? However, the Walk of Fame is a walk of shame 'cause you dumb niggers don't know how to present a star like this. This is a star. This is a true star. However, the Walk of Fame for Mr. Burton, let us acknowledge it. Where is Burton? Why didn't he come to his own presentation? 'Cause he says, fuck you, these guys are morons. I ain't gonna waste my time with Soto Martinez or that other dumb bucket head. Right, pumpkin? Now let me go to number ten, pumpkin head. Fuck number ten and fuck Thirty-Ninth Street Council District Nine 'cause it's a conflict of interest 'cause Kern Price goes to court Thursday of the following week. And by the way, Kevin De Leon, that was a mighty fine couple of good hugs you gave earlier in that presentation.
You need to stick to the agenda items or I'm gonna move you to general public comment? So this is your only warning.
Now, I'm on item number, awareness of overdose. L.A. is the capital of overdose. Why is that? Because niggers don't pay attention to what's happening on our streets. Any one of you, smoking scam, smoking scat, go to Skid Row with your bag of huff and show the world what that shithole fentanyl is doing to the Skid Row population because the Juju speaker up there doesn't wanna make it an awareness. He wants people to overdose. He wants people to fucking die on our fucking streets at a fucking time when we know it's all fucked up, dumb motherfucker. Then the last item with my twenty-one seconds, you jackass. CD one. Oh, no, I'm not gonna talk about Ms. Hernandez. We got it clear on the record, we're friends. And friends don't fuck friends. Friends understand friends and that's the reason why Public Works should make corrections.
General public comment?
All I wanna do is understand why you're dragging me down. I guess it's a time to bury your ass with bam, fuck me, right? I'm all out. I'm not the enemy. I wanna wake up everything because everything is fucked. Everybody sucks, you do not really know. You're the best is the bad is to stay away from a motherfucker growing up in the city of L.A. Oh, yeah, stay away, motherfuckers, it's just one of those days. Limp Bizkit, another fucked up day and another fucked up way and another fucked up place and another fucked up job and another fucked up city just like L.A. So if you don't fuck around and you don't act like a clown, then maybe Pumpkinhead will start fucking with my time.
Next speaker?
We have, uh, one more speaker?
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Grand Rising, everyone on city council. I wanted to address, um, agenda items eleven and twelve and I also wanted to make public comment.
Okay, so you have, you have two minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Go ahead and start with the items.
Is that three minutes in total?
It's, it's three minutes in total, but you can only speak to, on the items, one minute per item each, so I'll, I'll remind you if you get to that point, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So, um, my concern with regards to, um, the overdose awareness. There's currently a homeless crisis in Los Angeles. This is being addressed by Mayor Karen Bass's Inside Safe Program. And it's overseen by Christopher Vargas. One of the agencies contracted to provide services is the Weingard Center Association in connection with LASSA and DHS. Prior to July thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, the Weingard Center Association was housing its participants in the L.A. Grand, where they were to reside until demobilization to the Mayfair was complete. Unless they would be housed in the Weingard Tower or elsewhere.
So, Speaker, you're welcome to continue during general on this topic if you'd like, but if you wanna speak up to item twelve, please switch now for the items.
With regards to the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, I think that a lot of these, I think that these two items that I'm speaking to all tie into the same thing because the primary goal here is to reduce harm and the amount of trauma that the individuals, the homeless individuals are incurring in the city and that I feel like that's the overall premise. So, um, as I was saying, a lot of the participants were unlawfully ejected on or before June twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-four and their personal property and or possessions destroyed and or improperly.
You have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
And or improperly trespassed upon, thereby placing many homeless people who were already housed in a more vulnerable and precarious position than they initially were. In effect, being more homeless than they were before, if that's possible. No consideration, again, for harm reduction or the impact of trauma. All things considered, a tort claim was brought to the attention of the city attorney present here today and said claim was denied, offset instead to be filed as a county tort due to LASSA's involvement. As if the city's Inside Safe Program was not the umbrella under which all these programs exist. The billions of dollars from HUD were presented to the city of Los Angeles and something needs to be done immediately in order to rectify these egregious acts and make these participants whole again before a huge class action lawsuit is filed against all parties involved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, that concludes in-person public comment. Uh, we'll now go to the phones.
Call-in user one, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Caller, user one, this is your last opportunity to speak, please press star six to unmute now. Yes, I think you're unmuted, which items would you like to speak to? Okay, caller, we still can't hear you, so unfortunately, we're gonna have to move on to the next caller. Next caller?
Call-in user two, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Good morning, Brocklander, Los Angeles private investigator.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Just a general public comment today.
Okay, so you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Uh, you're called on racism and raised homophobia. As it relates to the city council, people need to stop sucking up to the city council. All of this pick-me, pick-me, them thanking them for a golden shower because they call it rain. No keep changing that shit, deal. I'm here to show people that they have, uh, a choice to have their own voice, not cater to all the fragile egos of the people who are responsible for the current state of our city because of their lack of testicular fortitude. I don't have to beg for attention. Please, sir, now I have another shot of scrotum fine. The council acts like they deserve our respect and support. It's not what you deserve, it's what you earn. And I don't always agree with Stacy, but I get behind her for the ideas I do agree with. Not like I get behind C four. Start using your mouth for something other than the city council's poop-coated jizz catcher. Uh, shout out to Smoking Scan, you guys have a good day.
Next caller?
Call-in user with the last four digits, one, nine, nine, one. Please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, which items would you like to speak to?
All right. Okay, good morning, items nine, ten, twelve, and general public comment.
Okay, good morning.
I'll speak, uh, uh, good morning, I'll speak at this clown show on all available items and general public comment.
Okay, so you have three minutes?
Item nine and my.
Go ahead, you have three minutes for the items.
Item nine, okay, I'm starting with my item. Item nine should be renamed the Walk of Shame and should receive a no vote if indicted embezzling criminal Kern Price and unelected Heather Hutt are allowed to vote. This Walk of Shame item should include additional funding from the city to include a Walk of Fame or Shame star at this location for Kern Price and sleazy Dawson's legendary corruption. Item ten is by indicted polygamous embezzler Kern Price for placing a city lien on a citizen's property in the amount of three thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars and two cents instead of doing something to assist this property owner. This item should receive a no vote because I believe it is another criminal act of embezzlement by Kern Price and petty pink face Krikorian to funnel the money into Kern Price and Dawson's family businesses. These clowns are placing city liens on this and other citizens' properties while there are sixty thousand homeless people on our street. Item twelve, for six hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars for beautification and cleanup of, should receive a no vote in the motion, we worked to assist elderly and disabled citizens to pay rent and because indicted embezzling criminal Kern Price and unelected incompetent Heather Hutt will be voting. The six hundred thousand dollars of this motion is a testament of the city, L.A. City Council being the most corrupt elite government in the history of the U.S. General public comment?
Go ahead, you have one minute.
The L.A. Sleazy Council. Yes, general comment. L.A. Council is the most corrupt local government in the history of the United States where petty pink face Armenian dictator Paul Ku Klux Blakorian has indicted embezzling polygamist criminal Kern Price and sleazy Dawson, voting daily with unelected Heather Hutt. The black community again has zero representation from these incompetent corrupt sellouts, self-fearing indicted, black Uncle Tom criminal members of this corrupt city council. I demand all their resignations. I demand the resignation of petty pink face corrupt Krikorian, of course, he's honestly out. Public, black faces occupy twenty percent of the Sleazy Council, yet black people are nearly fifty percent of the homeless, fifty percent of the incarcerated, fifty percent of the unemployed. Their resignations are demanded. Thank you.
Okay, next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, nine, five, one, nine. Please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Yes, my name is Jason, I'm a smoking scan viewer.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
Um, what items are available today that are pumpkin head?
So the items that are open for public comment, and this is for everyone on the phones, items number nine through twelve, item thirteen on the continuation agenda and item number twenty-one from Wednesday, which is being reconsidered.
Good deal, well, I won't speak on the Wednesday one, but I'll speak on all the available items and general public comment, if you would please.
Okay, so you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment? Please stay on topic for the items, go ahead.
Like always, brother. Um, so the other day I was down on Figaro with this chick and, um, I was trying to do a man, you know, a man, little layup in her mouth there and I was wondering about, um, the two-for-ones we have down there.
Okay, so this is not on topic, this is the, your only warning? Please stick to the agenda items, I'm gonna, I'm going to move you to general public comment.
Yes, sir, so I can't talk about this lady down on Figaro and the two-for-one issue we were having there the other night.
So you know the rules, you call in every meeting. Please stick to the items or I'm gonna move you to general public comment, go ahead.
Really? Well, I tell you what, go ahead and move in there, brother, there.
Okay, you have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
Thank you there, brother, shout out to the smoking scan community. Anyway, as I was saying, I was down on Figaro the other day and, um, you know, this chick, I was rolling with my homie or whatever and this chick, you know, I was, you know, you know, I was doing my usual, usual thing there, you know, enjoying myself there and I was trying to figure out she, she wouldn't, she had a problem, you know, um, she wanted me to split, she wanted me to spend more than five, or the two of us, she wouldn't, you know, go.
Caller, again, we have this discussion almost every meeting. You need to tie it to something within the subject matter jurisdiction of this, of the city. Otherwise, you're gonna forfeit your time, go ahead.
All right, okay, all right, well, you know, I was just, just wondering, you know, you know, how, it, you know, it's amazing how we can, you know, put a man on the moon, but we can't get a hold of, you know, split five dollars with a handjob, me and my boy the other day down there on Figaro.
So you've been warned, again, just for future meetings and today, you need to speak to items that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. You are not on topic, even in general public comment, so. Okay, so you forfeited your time, next caller?
Caller with the last four digits, seven, two, five, five. Please state your name and the items you'd like to speak to.
All items and general public comment.
Okay, good afternoon, you have three minutes for the items.
This is Richard Serrano, thank you for the time. Um, smoking scan, thank you for looking out for me. Uh, number ten. In two thousand ten, we did the same thing. The point, the city needs money. You sent all offices that can collect revenue to go look for that revenue. So three thousand dollars imposed on somebody that might not be able to pay it is kind of a sham because next thing you know, parking enforcement goes up, building and safety goes, looks for extra money and looks for that money. I've already lived through this, two thousand nine, two thousand ten. So now that you have a financial crisis, you're going back into the same order. Let me see where we can find it. A second revenue other than taxes back then was parking enforcement. And since the homeless situation came in, we've let off on that a little bit, and now they're losing a million and a half dollars a year. But I'm sure it'll be back to the $6 million it created back in 2010, because you're looking for money. At $3,000, imagine if the person doesn't have it. If they had it, they probably would have paid it. I think you guys should think about that, how it affects that person and everyone else in your constituents are. It's more than just grabbing the money and not being reasonable. They might not be able to go down to City Hall and talk to you. But nevertheless, that, there's $3,000. If they didn't pay it at the beginning, they can't pay it now. Number 11, lighting up the City Hall. Even though in District 6 at 9080, they're putting a new fence, this uh, Emila Padilla's office has come out. L.A.'s Circle has come out to check the people out there. Uh, Laura Bernard, she, again, she, uh, Lorena Barra, she came out, she called me back and let me know that they were trying to place these people again, they're on a waiting list, trying to find locations for these people. I don't just need to get rid of the encampments, I'm trying to help these people. But $800 illuminating this building would have fed those people, or maybe got them transportation to locations to house them for a day or two. I'm not sure how you guys spend your monies that way, because it's not your money direct, but that's a way to waste your money when you have so many people homeless and hungry. Number 12. Yeah, I'm back, going back to 9080, Woodman Avenue in Arlita. Starbucks thanked me for the help, Emila Padilla, I'm thanking you for trying to get these people placed. It's not just about breaking up the encampments, it's actually doing something for the people. Smoke and Scan, again, thank you for all the support in your group, knowing exactly that I do care about these people. It's not about me. And all the positive people like Lionel, uh, Richard Hop, uh, Daniel Dustgau, Rob, Rob, all these guys that come out to do a positive thing, I love it. And number 12, it's still number 12, thank you for the enhancement, uh, situation here, Mr. Hernandez, is because that money shouldn't be having, you shouldn't be looking for it. We should be able to do that through the money we took away, those 10,000 positions for street services and sanitation. Now they're working on weekends, every other weekend. You'll never clean the city that way. You guys allocated the money in the wrong direction. You might have gave 1.6 to the LAPD, 23 more officers out of the academy, you're still 800 short for your 9,000? And now they still can't answer the phone until 45 minutes, and then after that, now they're an hour and a half to respond? And every time I hear is, you know, we don't have the manpower. No, you do. A thousand people kept people, uh, you know, that didn't stop us from operating before. Now we're just finding excuses and overtime. I do care-
Caller, your time has expired.
Call-in user four, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Yes, thank you for talking. Oh, oh.
Okay, so you are unmuted, um, but you're breaking up quite badly. So which items would you like to speak to? Yeah, caller, we're only getting maybe one or two percent of the things you're saying. So, um, again, one last try. Which items would you like to speak to?
Comment, all items.
Okay, so-
Can you hear, can you hear me, sir?
So I'm sorry, caller, we can hear, again, only one or two words. So we're gonna have to move on to the next caller. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits 0463, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Yeah, 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 this is Shelley Babes. Hey, Smokey Scan, demons the man.
Good afternoon, which items would you like to speak to?
Uh, public, general, whatever, sucker.
Okay, so you have one minute, go ahead.
Generals gathered in their masks, just like witches at Black Masses. Evil minds that plot destruction, slash of death construction. Good afternoon, you pieces of shit, elite communist war pigs, who just sit on their asses and collect over 200,000 a year in your mansions while the rest of us just fight for crumbs? Why you do nothing because you don't want to fix any problems? You need to justify your jobs. And Mao would be so proud of you, redcoats. And Jing Jing with his micro penis would just love you and accept you. You are pieces of shit, and you know it, you communist war pigs.
Okay, next caller, actually, while we're waiting for the next caller, Mr. Herman, please do not disrupt the other callers. Next caller?
Caller with the last four digits 4208, please unmute yourself and state the items you'd like to speak to.
Bob Quan, just general public comment, and uh-
Good afternoon, you have one minute, go ahead.
I need to call out Bob Blumenfield's disruptive behavior. We, we had him earlier this week interrogating a speaker, asking about their language, because he wanted to go back and translate, and, and when that speaker came up today and asked about interpretation services, an entirely reasonable question, they were reprimanded and told they were being disruptive. All this talk about language access, and somebody coming up and merely asking about interpretation services is, is disruptive. Not a good look for the white boy representing the West Valley. I mean, we just getting through the fed tapes, all this cloud of racism, do we have to really go back to John Popash sitting on the phone with N.C. member, talking about Bolcino's coming in, and then there goes the neighborhood? There are those tapes as well. Interesting, Bob.
That was our last caller.
Okay. Great, we will move to the meeting now. What is before us? We have, I believe we have nine, 10, and 12, is that the first items?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Colleagues, any members wish to comment on items nine, 10, or 12? Seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll on those items. Close the roll, tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
Okay, those measures are approved. Next?
Uh, next would be item one, and that was amended by motion Rodriguez Blumenfield.
Okay, any, seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Uh, next would be item 11, and that was amended by motion Hernandez Rodriguez.
Okay, seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
That measure's approved.
Next would be item 13, and that was amended by motion De Leon Blumenfield.
Okay, seeing no members on the queue, let's open the roll. Close the roll, tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
That measure's agreed to. What's next?
Uh, next would be the reconsidered item, and that requires two votes, sir. So the first vote is the question whether to substitute.
Okay, on, on the vote to substitute, let's open the roll. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
That measure's agreed to, now on the motion itself. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tally the votes.
Ten ayes.
That motion is agreed to. Uh, what's next?
Counselor has the motions for posting a referral, sir.
Okay, without objection, they're posted and referred.
The desk is clear, sir.
Great, we've got a nice, clear desk, clutter-free, and let's move to announcements. I see Mr. McCosker is, uh, already standing up, so let's start with you, Mr. McCosker.
Thank you very much. I actually have a couple of announcements, members. We have a, a couple of great events happening in the district. Uh, you all hear me talk about the 1-5 as being from Watts to the waterfront, and I'm excited to share that tomorrow, I had a couple of our great ministers say, let's do a Watts to the waterfront event, a family fun day. I had Pastor Adam Stevenson of San Peters Warren Chapel, which is right around the corner from my house, and a great friend, Minister Eddie Felton of the Morningstar Missionary Baptist Church in Watts, say, let's have a family fun day, a couple of churches will host it, and we'll invite all the churches in between, and we'll play softball and barbecue. And so we are going to do that at Peck Park tomorrow. It'll be from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. All are invited for the family fun day. The first baseball game or softball game will be between Warren Chapel and Morningstar Missionary Baptist Church, which you might know as Pastor Clark's Church. Eddie Felton is the minister there. Come on out. Our other event, also tomorrow, we're gonna be pretty busy, we're gonna go from the park to the pool. For the second year in a row, we're going to be holding a free summer pool party, it's kind of an end-of-summer pool party at Harbor Pool. That Harbor Pool is at 1221 North Figaro Place, right by Harbor College, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. Over the last few weeks, we had some great folks in the community who collected donations of gently-used or new swimwear that we were able to distribute to our neighbors who don't have those things, but we're gonna have delicious food, games, music, and raffles. It's a great opportunity for folks to come on out and have some fun at their pool right there at Harbor. I will also say, if you don't mind me taking a point of personal privilege, the 1-5 grew by one resident two days ago. My daughter and many of your friends, Nella McCosker and Nick Stelzer, welcomed into the world, Cahia Wilma Stelzer, a little girl whose name, yes, let's hear it, for Cahia. Cahia is Irish for warrior, so just like her mom, she's gonna be a, a strong, you know, warrior, a, a great young woman growing up in our district. She is healthy and well, mom is healthy and well. Her middle name, her middle name, Wilma, is for her great-grandmother, her great-great-grandmother, Wilma Gray, who was a single mom who came to San Pedro and changed the course of life for the McCosker family when she married into a family that she lifted up and made better. So thank you very much for your good wishes.
Congratulations. Uh, Councilman Rodriguez, next.
Thank you, congratulations, Mr. McCosker. Very happy for Nella and your, your whole family, it's gonna be great. Colleagues, tonight, we are hosting our final movie night at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, where we will be featuring Sing. Last, for our, we, we condensed all of our movie nights, we had a number of movie nights, I think overly ambitious when I first got elected, we had 13 movie nights, one at every single park in the district. We have consolidated, since we've had such larger-scale events, and have consolidated to two movie nights that you're able to watch from the largest municipal swimming pool in the country at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center. And last, uh, when we did it on, our first one on August 6th, we had over 2,400 individuals show up to participate. So it was a great night, we're excited to welcome another large crowd and families from all over the city, it's not just the 7th District. We have folks coming up from South Los Angeles, we have folks from all over the San Fernando Valley coming out, so we invite everybody to our movie night to watch Sing. Bring your swimsuit, your towel, you can watch from the sandy beach or from the pool, and it starts at 6:00, and we'll see you tonight. And then tomorrow, we have the commencement, we have the viewing for the Olympics happening at the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center, but also we are kicking off, we gotta get everybody into that Olympic spirit, we are kicking off our Summer Reading Olympics competition that will also start tomorrow at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center. Want to invite everybody out to participate, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Leon.
Yeah, thank you much, Mr. President. Tonight, colleagues, as well, too, in Highland Park, at the Highland Park Rec Center, we're gonna have our movie night as well, we've been having consecutive movie nights throughout the summer, but we'll have our Highland Park movie night at the Harle, Highland Park Rec Center. Tomorrow at 10:00 a.m. in Bull Heights, right across there from L.A. General Hospital, working with Salaf as well as Clinica Oscar Romero, we'll be giving out backpacks to young boys and girls, getting ready for the brand-new school year this upcoming fall. Uh, and, uh, Sunday as well, Victory Outreach at 2:00 on Huntington Drive in El Sereno, working with Victory Outreach, distributing backpacks. And Sunday evening, our concert series in the park in Eagle Rock, because we've had so many folks come in last week, Sunday, uh, when I was engaging with a lot of the folks who come in with their picnic chairs, their baskets, and, uh, by that time, it's hot, no doubt about it, but the sun is going down. Uh, we had folks from San Fernando that was there, we had some folks from Pedro that was there, folks from Audacity of L.A., from Pasadena and elsewhere. This Sunday, we have, the Beatles are actually gonna be playing, Sergeant Pepper Lonely Hearts, they're coming to play their set, so if you wanna see Ringo and George, you know, and John and Paul, come this Sunday to Eagle Rock Rec Center, where you're gonna see the Sergeant Pepper Lonely Hearts playing their hearts out, and I think we should probably gonna have a, a huge crowd this upcoming Sunday.
Great, thank you. Bring you back, as long as we're talking announcements, um, tonight, I've got Summer Night Lights tonight at Lanark Park. Uh, it's also a backpack giveaway, school supplies giveaway. Encourage folks to come there tonight at, uh, 7:00 o'clock. We had tomorrow, in, in the 3rd District, we also have movies on the green, as we do every week in the summer, The Blind Side is starting, is playing at Warner Center Park. And then Sunday, uh, we've got our, getting close to the end of our concert season, ABBA, we have an ABBA cover band coming, and they are at, that, the fun starts then at around 4:00 o'clock, uh, with some opening bands, and I think the ABBA cover band comes on after 6:00. So with that, I don't see any other announcements. Colleagues, are there any adjourning motions? There are, so I'd ask everyone to rise in, out of respect for the adjourning motions, and we will start with Mr. Price.
Thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, I've got two, uh, adjourning motions today, both for outstanding members of our business community. The first is Ted Brass, who is a notable face around Inglewood and South L.A., especially within the real estate community, serving as a real icon. In pursuing higher education, Ted received two Bachelor of Science degrees in business administration and public administration. He furthered his knowledge through numerous real estate certifications, uh, with the end goal of always delivering excellence. Ted began his real estate career at Century, Century 21 as an investment division manager that spanned over 25 years. Throughout that time, at Century 21, he consistently performed in the top 1% of sales volumes nationwide. Following his, a stellar performance, he founded Ted Brass Real Estate Solutions in 2004. He was previous president of the Consolidated Board of Realtors, Realtors, and active member of the California Association of Real Estate Brokers. Ted was characterized by his willingness to mentor many with a heartfelt advocate for fair housing. As a testament to his impact within the industry, Ted founded a program called Exit with Dignity, that encouraged owners of foreclosures to short-sale their houses, rather than undergoing a long modification process. Ted's 40-plus years in the real estate industry will be remembered, coupled by his calm demeanor and insightful advice to novice and experienced home and business owners. He was adamant about promoting diversity and inclusion within the industry to pave the way for future brokers. On Friday, January 19th, 2004, 2024, Ted entered eternal rest with loved ones by his side. May he rest in power and in peace. Members, I have another adjournment for Ted Short. He was born and raised in Evanston, Illinois, alongside three siblings. At the age of 18, Ted moved to L.A. to pursue his college education, where he obtained a MBA at Pepperdine. Ted was increasingly incredibly passionate about traveling, fine dining, and he was an avid fan of smooth jazz. One of Ted's favorite excursions was the Dave Carr Smooth Jazz Cruise, where he and his wife were booked on numerous occasions. However, Ted had deep love also for the sport of horse racing, and in fact, he owned horses at different times in his life. Following his educational pursuits, Ted was the personnel manager at Whittaker Corporation and a administrative assistant at North American Rock- Following his educational pursuits, Ted was the personnel manager at Whittaker Corporation, uh, and a administrative assistant at North American Rockwell. As a faculty member for the Claremont Colleges, he lectured on economic issues, uh, and current events. He became president of Cunningham, Short, and Berryman, uh, a, a consulting firm, management consulting engineering firm. As a professional, Ted served as a specialist in building and maintaining relationships with various local government entities, as well as, uh, investing in the public. His achievements reflected his capabilities in collective bond issuance and financial advisory roles for the city of Compton, Inglewood, Los Angeles, Oakland, uh, and the counties of LA and San Bernardino. Ted was a devout family man and a good citizen. He and his wife, uh, were married for more than 35 years, and they had six kids. The family decided to settle in Arcadia, uh, where they, where he retired. But he will always be remembered as a loving father, grandfather, great-grandfather, and beloved uncle. Uh, on Saturday, July 27th, 2024, Ted's spirit departed his earthly body with his family at his side. May he rest in power and peace. Thank you.
Okay, uh, additional adjourning motions, looking to my right, to my left. Mr. Lee?
I apologize, Mr. President. This is not so much an adjourning motion, but, um, I, an announcement that on this Sunday, we are going to be commemorating the 25th, uh, anniversary of the Jewish Community Center located in my district, where, uh, 25 years ago, uh, someone unfortunately took the lives of people in my district. So on August 10th, 1999, North Valley JCC located in Northridge, was attacked by a gunman, gunman who shot five people at the JCC and then killed a poster work, poster worker. This was the first mass shooting event, uh, one of the first mass shooting events in California that rattled the local Jewish community, and that, at, uh, we will be commemorating this event along with the synagogues, uh, Templo Romacion and, um, Templo of At Shalom. You know, talking about this horrific event within our district, uh, and so just, uh, thank you for the, allowing me to present that this, this time.
Thank you, and, uh, I will be there. I was part of the ADL back then, uh, in the valley, and sadly remember that incident very well, and, uh, I will be joining you at that memorial. Any other adjourning motions? Seeing none? This meeting is adjourned. Go forth, serve the city, do great work.